Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see a full house. The May 25th, 2021, meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. I would like to ask members of the audience and for the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, that please remember to turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes, will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board's secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The same procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throh, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
He's out in lobby.
All right, moving on to the inspiration and pledge. We have Mr. Mark Ingram, Program Specialist for Curriculum and Instruction, to please come forward and introduce the individuals who will be providing us with the inspiration and the pledge. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Throh, Vice Chair King, members of the Board, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Prestapino. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce the winners of the Bridges Project essay contest. The mission of the Bridges Project, Ocala, Marion County, is to break through barriers among racial and social groups and individuals in Marion County, and to build pathways to understanding for the reduction and elimination of conflict. Representing them here tonight are Reverend Peggy Hostetler, retired Principal Patricia Keith, and their President, Mrs. Burt Perkins. This year, students were asked to discuss the issues that divide us and the future of civil discourse in this country. Judges were hard-pressed to choose winners from the 57 entrants and selected 10 additional students for honorable mention. Our first-place middle school and high school winners are here tonight and are being awarded $100 Barnes &amp; Noble gift cards. The top three middle schoolers were all from Mrs. Pamela Ernest, 6th grade World History Class at Howard Middle School. In third place was Ryan Wood, in second place was Michael Rebey, and in first place was Kendall Carpenter. For high school, third and second place went to 9th grade students in Mr. Gibbs' English class at Lake Ware High School, Isaiah Ross and Allison Catalinas. Adriana Arias, a senior in Mrs. Shepherd's leadership class, Ms. Shepherd's here too, at Bellevue High School, won first place in the high school category. She would like to share an excerpt from her essay.
Hi, like you said, I'm Adriana Arias, and specifically, I'm going to be reading about the prompt that was provided regarding the event that happened on January 6th, 2021, regarding the Capitol, and whether or not the participants should be facing consequences, and whether or not it was considered a protest or insurrection. The year 2020 was a no-means-ordinary for anyone. Beginning with the global pandemic, 2020 was the start of a terribly unfortunate domino effect that has continued well into 2021 and shows no signs of slowing. Arguably, the series of disastrous events came to a peak in January of 2021. On January 6th, 2021, a group of armed domestic terrorists stormed the Capitol following the release of the 2020 election results. It is debated as to whether or not this event should be considered a protest or insurrection. However, to determine this, there needs to be a full understanding of what each of those terms mean. The word protest is defined as a statement or action expressing disapproval or objection to something, while insurrection is defined as a violent uprising against an authority or government. This situation should be looked at from the viewpoint of bipartisanship, division. Rather than voting for a candidate, many voters choose to vote for their party regardless of the candidate's personal values and beliefs. This leaves the nation stagnant, as nothing can ever get done if we're going back and forth between two completely opposite sides of the spectrum just for the sake of party competition. There is a constant state of tension and hatred solely based on whether someone is a Democrat or Republican. If this problem continues without resolution, the nation will never make progress and is only moving closer to a civil war between parties. In my opinion, one solution to this issue would be to discontinue the party system, the two-party system. In doing this, it would ensure that voters are voting objectively for a presidential candidate rather than a political affiliation. Holistically, the events that unfolded on January 6th, 2021, can only be called insurrection. Considering all of the contributing factors, the starting of the United States Capitol was in no way an action of expressing disapproval of or objection to something, but instead of violent uprising. Regardless of the reasoning, the participants of this attempted government seizure should be held accountable for committing such a serious and dangerous act that threatened U.S. security and freedom.
Thank you. Very powerful. And now Kendall would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely, and on behalf of the whole Board, just wanted to welcome all of you tonight, and I wrote down as many names as fast as I could. Mr. Ingram, thank you very much for coming forward with these two wonderful young ladies, and thank you, Ms. Shepherd and Ms. Ernest. It's always great to see you. It's always this time of year, because you always make sure that your kids participate in essay writing.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, and also Ms. Perkins and Ms. Keith, and there was one more of you whose name I did not write down.
Hostetler.
Yes, Ms. Hostetler, I should have remembered that one. Thank you very much for the role that you're playing in encouraging our youth to think very deeply about what's going on in our world today. So, thank you again for coming by to see us. Congratulations.
I think they want to do the presentation. I think they want to do a presentation.
Oh, presentation, okay. Let's keep going. Just gets better.
Your certificate?
Yeah.
And your card.
Ah. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your participation. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Dr. Gullett, if you would please introduce the individuals to be recognized from the Transportation Department.
Wonderful. Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I have great pleasure of introducing two employees to you. As we know, tomorrow is the last day of the school year. And throughout the year, when I've heard about some random acts of kindness and just exemplary work to reach out to our students, I've gone out and met with individuals. But just recently, I was informed about a couple of employees, and they don't know completely why they're here, I started to fill them in a little bit, but two employees that went above and beyond. They are from our Transportation Department, and they recognize that a student was potentially in a very dangerous situation, and they took great care to make sure to prevent this child from being in danger. And they didn't share that with anyone, but someone recognized that, and without their, as I described, heroic efforts, it might have turned out to be a very different circumstance for that child. So, I thought it was really important to bring them to the Board, to thank them publicly as outstanding employees of all the great work that happens in Marion County every day. So, I would like if Ms. Luanne Taylor would come forward, and Ms. Tasha Humphries.
I have just a certificate for them, to thank them on behalf of our district. So, Ms. Humphries, we thank you for your leadership in serving our students. Likewise, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
We couldn't be more grateful on behalf of the district. Thank you for everything. And I'm going to ask Ms. Rora to come forward as well, if she wants to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gullett, and Board members, and good evening to everyone. I too really greatly appreciate the representation we have here at Transportation. They are eyes on wheel when it comes to being mindful of what's happening around them as they're driving, and as they approach the bus stops, and get ready to open that door. And immediately upon approaching a bus stop, Mrs. Taylor recognized things looked different than they did the day before. And having encountered in a danger and situation in that area, she immediately, quickly backed that bus up and turned it around to get out of the area, only to be pursued just a little ways down the road. So, they did a great thing in keeping in communication. They had everybody behind their back, they had everybody on their side, we had them on GPS, and escorted it to a safe place where law enforcement could meet the bus, and then we could further distribute the children to their families safely. So, we appreciate those extra eyes, being so thoughtful and careful, and paying attention to your surroundings. You visit it every day, and sometimes we get complacent about what we do every day. It becomes a routine. But that day, she was very attentive to what was happening and that those surroundings had changed, and I greatly appreciate both of you. Thank you, Board.
Ms. Humphries and Ms. Taylor, don't go away quite so fast. I know you probably don't want to come back up here, but the Board does want to acknowledge both of you. And my understanding is, Ms. Humphries and Ms. Taylor, is that you two are a team. Would you just tell us a little more about that?
I'm the driver, and she's my assistant, and she takes care of the children. Oh, sorry.
I'm the mic.
You're famous now.
I'm the driver, and she's my assistant, and she makes sure the children are doing what they're supposed to do, and she is the best I've ever had. I've been working for almost 30 years, and I'm going out with her if I can. She's the best. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And our kids, so many of our kids, how they are in very challenging circumstances, and it takes every single one of us to be vigilant and to keep an eye out for each child. And what you do on a daily basis is incredible work and incredible love for kids that you demonstrated. And just wanted, on behalf of the whole Board, to thank you again so much for what you do every day, and especially what you did the other day. Thanks again.
I'm sure.
Yes.
I just need to break with this one, just for a few, because I don't think people really understand what really happened in this situation without going into details, because this was at the end of their, this is the time to go home. And they could have been very complacent and put these kids off at that stop, but you didn't rush home, and they were pursued. They had some serious stuff going on. So, I thank y'all for not saying I got to get home by a certain time. Thank y'all for that extra effort. Thank, I talked to Ms. Rora about this one. Thank y'all for what you really, really did, because it could have escalated until we would have been on national news. It could have escalated that far, so really, thank y'all so much. Thank y'all.
Dr. Gullett.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 25th, 2021, School Board meeting with the materials in the Board packet. Those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 23rd, 2021, School Board meeting?
A move.
Moved by Board Member McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes to the April 5th, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So, move.
Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to persons requesting to address the Board. I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening, Chair Throh. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and School District matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board's Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board's Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record, and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The Board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements. Chair Throh, that concludes my explanatory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, how many individuals do we have speaking tonight?
Total of nine. Six are speaking on the same topic, and three are on various topics.
So, total nine, six same topic, three other topics. Okay. Board?
Say three minutes.
Three minutes for the six that are on the same topic.
I second that.
Okay. I believe we have consensus, and then five minutes each for the three that are different topics. Okay, good. All right.
Ms. Lindsay Ardmore.
Ms. Ardmore, please state your name and your address, and then just keep an eye here for when your time expires, or you can see on the screen, it'll show you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Lindsay Ardmore, 5373 Northeast 2nd Avenue, here in Ocala. I stand here to represent over 100 parents that are asking the School Board to create a policy of greatest benefit to our children for the 2021, '22 school year, and make masks personal choice. As parents of school-bound children, we would never expect a one-size-fits-all education for our children, and are grateful for all the policies carefully instituted by this Board so that each child is able to receive the help that they need most. Passing a one-size-fits-all mask mandate would not be in keeping with this Board's commitment to serve our community. As we are all aware of the greatest potential, your decisions have to impact each one of our families and the lives of our children. And you can all be certain that come election time, we will remember which of you made decisions in the best interest of our kids and our community, and represented the wishes of the people you are here to serve. Through the times of uncertainty this pandemic has brought to our door, we can be grateful for the precautions taken to limit the damage done. We do agree that cleaning procedures have been hugely effective this year in abating the common cold, flus, and other bugs that are normal and unexpected. We would love to see the extreme conscientiousness that was so necessary in the past year to continue curbing widespread sickness in all forms in the coming school year. Now that we have experience and data on our side, we are confident in our request that masks be made optional, and each family can determine their personal needs for safety and precautions. Experience shows that our own vigilance and caution was sufficient. My daughter attended an unmasked preschool for the past year and was never once quarantined or exposed to COVID-19. The entire school had two quarantine periods, and one was for a rotavirus. People don't have to be mandated to take care of themselves and their families. Vaccines are opening paths for people who are suffering high-risk problems. People that want to be vaccinated are vaccinated. We need to respond in kind to the normalcy that these precautionary efforts are opening up to us. I have written Governor DeSantis to ask that he follow suit with Iowa, Texas, and Utah, and make masks optional, not mandatory. I'm grateful to see leadership that responds to people they are serving. Earlier this month, Governor DeSantis said, quote, "These kids do not need to be wearing these masks. I'm sorry, they don't. We need to be able to let them be kids and let them act normally, and that's what should be the case in the fall throughout the school year," end quote. I'm sure you are aware our Education Commissioner, Richard Corcoran, directed superintendents in April to not impose mask mandates in their districts next school year because they are unnecessary. We agree with his statement, per memo, quote, "They serve no remaining good at this point in our schools," end quote. As the daughter, granddaughter, and sister of educators, I feel that it's important to note that teachers shouldn't put themselves at risk. If they are truly uncomfortable coming to school at this point after vaccinations have been made available, and they don't want to wear a face mask or shield for self-protection, then maybe this profession isn't right for them. I have a petition with over 113 names on it collected in just under 48 hours. We would like to request that you guys make masks optional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ardmore, did you wish to leave a copy of that petition with us?
I am, yes.
You can give it to us later, or you can give it to us tonight.
Okay, can I hand it to you?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Lori Martin Gregory.
Probably in the hallway, maybe.
We go ahead with the next one.
Christina Anderson.
Oh, there's Lori.
Oh, here's she is. All right, Ms. Anderson.
Hi there. Thank you all so much. My name is Lori Gregory. I am a fourth-generation Ocalan. I'm raising a fifth-generation Ocalan here, and it's really a privilege to be here with you all, because I have such strong love for Marion County. My grandfather was the first PR man at Silver Springs, and my grandmother worked for the Sheriff's Department as a dispatcher. So, I have a lot of love in my heart and a lot of pride for Marion County. I wanted to bring your attention to some information, because part of my career path led me to be an investor relations consultant for biotech and pharmaceutical companies about, oh my gosh, 20 years ago-ish. What I learned was how the pharmaceutical industry works and how messaging works to the investment community. It was a really interesting experience. What I now see, and what I now understand, is that we are being given information that has been pumped through our media that isn't necessarily accurate with regard to real science, but instead is junk science that's been pushed. And I say that with confidence, because I'm used to reading scientific papers. I've been reading peer-reviewed scientific studies since I worked on Wall Street back in 1987. So, I'm very familiar with, you know, the vernacular and the language and how that works. So, I just wanted to share with you all, even though, you know, now I actually am a documentary film producer, and I help expose corruption in the pharmaceutical industry, I speak about this issue all over the country. I am more nervous here in Marion County, because this is my home turf, than any other place. So, I apologize for my nervousness. I hope you can just bear with me. I wanted to share with you some interesting data. The first is, we have a Danish study that you may or may not be familiar. I brought this to leave with you all, so that if you want to have a look, and if you actually are interested after in getting the links, I'd be happy to email them to you, so that you can refer to them and have time to kind of look and digest. And I wanted to share this with you, because I know that we stand on freedom in Marion County, and I really love that about Marion County. It's one of the reasons why I was so excited to come back home. And while I applaud what you're looking at for options for the fall and for the summer, I just wanted to, between me and God, in my heart, to know that I at least came and gave you guys the information, and I would just encourage you to consider it, and look at the facts, and not push through options when actually there's a lot of proof that shows we don't need them at all. The first study I want to leave with you is a Danish study which shows that the effectiveness of wearing a mask is a fail. It's less than 50%, and the American Lung Association says the gold standard is 95% or better. So, this is the first study that I'd love to leave with you all to take a look at. The second information I want to leave with you is an article that appeared in the Gateway Pundit a couple weeks ago. We didn't see it on mainstream media, unfortunately, but in the Gateway Pundit, they announced that a peer-reviewed scientific study was released that shows that ivermectin can end the COVID pandemic, because not only does it cure COVID, but it actually prevents it. So, and then I also printed a copy of said ivermectin study, so that you guys could take a look. It's kind of thick, but you can check that out. I know my time's expired, I'm going to go quickly. Here's a Chinese study that showed 10 million people, there is no asymptomatic spread of COVID. There's actually two more studies that were done to this effect. And last and not least, by any means, this is a really important document. I printed the website, I printed this document from the CDC website. I didn't want to print out the over 60 scientific papers that are listed wherever these dots are, and pardon me, my printer's running out of color ink, so you can't see the blue links, but every one of these dots represents a link to a patent that the CDC has for technology that they license to the vaccine industry. So, when you talk to the CDC, you're actually talking to a stakeholder.
I'm tired, so.
And that's really important for us to know. God bless you all. Thank you so much. I'll leave this here with you, and I am, here is a resource if you ever need one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Christina Anderson?
Good evening. My name's Christina Anderson, 1818 Southeast 85th Street Road, Ocala. Thank you for allowing us to veer a little bit off agenda tonight and listening to our concerns. We wanted to get the ball rolling on this topic sooner than later, and we appreciate you hearing us. This fall, I'll have a senior, a freshman, a 6th grader, and a 2nd grader in the Marion County School District. My heart has hurt for these children since the day that the decision was made to mask them. In my opinion, this is child abuse. These little children are resilient, but they are also so, so vulnerable. We have seen a rise in child suicide, depression, anxiety, and fear. The psychological impact we're making on our children far outweighs the effects of COVID-19. Why did we ever start emulating the most communist country in the world? Despite the science that tells us masks do not prevent the spread of coronavirus, it says this right on the box. Why are we treating healthy children like they are contaminants? What is that teaching them? My 5th grader went to school with a boy that was so afraid, he sprayed circles around his desk. his desk every couple minutes, all day long, of hand sanitizer and he refused to get near anybody. What kind of fear will be distilled in this generation? I want my child to be a child. I wonder how they got children in Germany to punish Jews? Jews! My kids have been told, have told me about peers at their school who are expected to enforce other children to put masks on. To the point of the unwilling child being reprimanded, this is child abuse. My first grader's teacher sent home an email at our previous school asking parents to include names with the pictures in the sent-home assignments because she did not recognize our child without their masks. This is supposed to be the person with whom I trust my child's safety with while I am away. Here's a big one. Joy, anger, fear, surprise, sadness, contempt, disgust. These basic building blocks of emotional experience are written all over our faces. Legendary psychologist Paul Ekman has devoted his life's work to studying nonverbal emotional expression across cultures. His research suggests that we can largely recognize how people around the world feel by simply reading faces. All of humanity expresses these seven core feelings in ways that we universally comprehend. We depend on facial expressions to know and understand each other. With physical distancing, increased anxiety, and disrupted routines due to COVID-19, we seek emotional connection by simply seeing other facial expressions. The only thing masks block are our faces. We depend on nonverbal behavior and particularly facial expression to express ourselves and communicate to others. Those feelings above and many more get expressed on our faces. In some contexts, nonverbal communication accounts for the majority of what we understand in social exchanges. With our faces half-covered, we lose key nonverbal information. This is also important to teachers being able to understand and see issues with children when half of their face is covered, a lot of what is going on with this child is covered. Like raised eyebrows and shoulder strugs become highly ambiguous without cues from the mouth. This loss of information is like talking on your phone in a zone with weak cell service. You know, those times when you only hear every third word and eventually the call drops? The effect leaves us feeling less able to communicate and less able to understand each other. Masks are divisive and a constant reminder that we should be scared of other healthy people. The development of facial recognition is relatively weak in young children. According to University of Toronto psychologist Dr. King Lee, it is not until kids are about 14 years old that they reach adult-scale levels in recognizing faces. Before then, kids tend to see individual facial features rather than recognizing the person as a whole. By putting a mask, on masks, we take away information that makes it especially difficult for children to recognize others and read emotional signals, which is unsettling and disconcerting. These issues may be especially true to children who tend to have particular difficulties reading nonverbal cues. How will these generations be affected when needing to become confident contributing members of society? These points are not new to American parents. Countless numbers have been raising their voices and challenging mask mandates across the country. Unfortunately, their circles have fallen on deaf ears in most cities and states, a direct assault on civil liberties of millions. Children learn best in a safe nurturing environment. We also support the parent's right to direct the management of the child's health. Therefore, we want to have the choice when it comes to wearing masks. Furthermore, these masks are petri dishes on their faces. Ask any teacher or parent what the mask looks like at the end of the day. I have taken every opportunity to hug and kiss.
I'm so sorry, but you've gone way past your time and we were looking for a good place to finish.
Oh, I was reading so fast. Thank you so much. Can I say one last thing? I just, I just want to tell you, you guys, we are the parents of these children and the advocates and we love them more than anybody loves our children. We want the best for them. We would not do something or ask for something that was in their detriment and we believe it is in their detriment to keep them masked. Please give them the choice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a business meeting, folks, so let's maintain decorum, please. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Lucy Sullivan?
Lucy Sullivan, 811 Southeast 50th Terrace, Ocala, Florida. Fortunately, for the last couple of weeks, you've heard from me a lot. But I wanted to just reiterate that the mask situation should be optional, starting now forever. I don't think we should be playing to this misinformation campaign anymore. But I also wanted to address vaccines because at the last workshop, a gentleman called in, I think it was from the department, the Health Department, and he said that vaccines are now eligible for 12-year-olds and older. I found that frightening. I'm hoping that the school board in general will not have a policy of enforcing, promoting vaccines, the mRNA vaccine for children. I'm not sure if you're aware, doctors from all across the country have filed a lawsuit against the Secretary of U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And this is the reason they, I'm going to read it to you. This is the reason they filed the lawsuit. "There is a statistically 0% chance of young people dying of COVID-19. To promote an investigational product that has no long-term studies and no animal studies to pressure parents and teens to use an experimental product that has not been fully approved by the FDA breaks all of the rules of medicine and the HHS' own goal to protect Americans. The expansion of the emergency use authorization for younger children is all risk and no benefit. HHS is ignoring the science and the data. HHS is betraying its mission to enhance the health and well-being of all Americans and by fostering sound, sustained advances in the sciences underlying medicine, public health, and social services." The COVID-19 vaccine's side effects are as follows. "We've never seen this level of side effects for any vaccine without the FDA taking action. The rotavirus vaccine was canceled for 15 cases of non-lethal side effects and the swine flu vaccine was canceled for 25 deaths. But now, by the CDC's own data, we are seeing a 12,000% increase in deaths with these vaccines and they're still promoting it for our kids." I myself know of four people who have had adverse reactions to the vaccine, two dead and two barely made it without problems. One just recently got out of the hospital. The support science. Under the age of 20, the survivability rate for COVID-19 is 99.997%.
Your time has expired.
All right. Please don't promote the vaccine and please get rid of the masks as of this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Patricia Schaefer?
Patricia Schaefer, also known as PG2, most of you in this room. 2015 Southwest 43rd Place, Ocala. Like Lucy, you've seen me a lot. And I've got, I will applaud you on the, a couple weeks ago, the optional for outside and then just this past Thursday, optional beginning in summer school. And I'm here to ask you to immediately make it optional for the 21-22 school year. There are so many districts in the state that have already done so. You're waiting till July 22nd, which is what you decided at your last meeting, workshop, work session, just gives parents no time. You're waiting too long. I'm just asking you to please at least move the date up. I just want to give so much credit to these amazing parents that have come. I don't have children in the district any longer. My graduates from Vanguard were in 2011 and 2013, so it's been eight and 10 years since I've had a child in a school district. But you all know me from so many different venues and circles. The campaign trail, as you all know, many of you, other civic organizations. I, I am fighting for freedom. I'm fighting for the freedom of the children in this community and the freedom of their parents to make their own healthcare choices for their own children. We just passed parental, a parental rights bill and the governor, if I'm not mistaken, has already signed it. These parents have the right to make the choice for their children. If they choose to have them masked, that is their choice for their own children's healthcare. For those who desire to not have the detrimental effects of masks, as this, as the one mom so beautifully expressed, there are so many more detrimental effects to masking children than there are from the risk of COVID. So it makes one wonder, why are we masking children who are at such low risk? Is it because we're trying to protect the adults? And it is highly egregious if we are using children as a human shield against the adults. And for that, we should all be ashamed. Thank you for what you've done so far. Please consider moving the decision up for the 21-22 school year to immediate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Megan Banks?
Check outside.
Megan Banks?
Thank you. Hi. Megan Banks, Bellevue, Florida, 3420. I came today, y'all bear with me, because as I know this is a business meeting, we're also parents and this is a sensitive subject for all of us. And we came to represent our children in the best way that we can. I sent you all an email on May 12th and I just came to kind of reiterate some of those points that I made and to be a support system for the other parents who came today and for our children. I just want to start out by telling y'all that my eight-year-old, it just got me thinking while I was out there, my eight-year-old loves school and I told you guys this in the email. She absolutely loves school, everything about it. She loves seeing her friends. She loves learning. She comes home and she tells me about it every day, about her day. And she asked me a couple of months ago that if masks are mandatory next year, if, if I would homeschool her. And it broke my heart because she absolutely thrives in a school environment. But she can't wear a mask because she gets continuous bacterial infections, so she has to wear a shield. And she also wears glasses and it makes it difficult for her to see the board. So what other option is there for her? There's not because virtual school is not an option. It's not. It's not the same as in-person learning. We all know that. And I just wanted to point out the fact that we also know that students aren't wearing their masks how they're supposed to. I mean, they touch them, they drop them, they put them on dirty surfaces, they're not touching them by the ear loops like they're supposed to. So to me, I would think that would be even more of a danger to their health than not wearing one. I also wanted to touch on the fact that another parent did, that mental health is not being discussed. I get it that we're worried about the physical, but what about the mental that our kids are going through? That's a huge concern of mine, that this is going to make a lasting impression on them. I don't want them dealing with anxiety and depression for years to come because of this. And I'm an adult and when I put that mask on my face, it gives me severe anxiety. I can tell you all that right now and be very honest about it. I can only imagine what it's doing to our kids. And also, students being labeled as behavioral problems when they were not labeled that before, if a mask falls down or if they just need a break for a second and they pull it down. Teachers are super strict on this, some of them, and they're getting on to them and they're giving them lunch detentions and they're, you know, they have repercussions to face when they pull a mask down for a little bit. Also, I wanted to, you know, talk about how healthy children should not be responsible for the health of an adult. They shouldn't have to cover up their little healthy faces for an adult's health. That's an adult's responsibility to take care of their own health, not my child's. Also, I just wanted to say that we all have our own opinion on the mask-wearing and what we choose to do is our own, that's fine. I'm here to be an advocate for my child as all of you.
Your time has expired.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
You can finish your thought.
Okay. I just wanted to say that your personal opinion on mask-wearing, whether it's for it or against it, is your personal opinion. However, it's irrelevant when it comes to this. Parents need to decide what's best for their own child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Irene Sidon?
Are we on a new topic yet? Okay. Attorney. Irene Sidon, Bellevue, Florida. If a child finds tobacco or drugs on his school grounds, what should that child do? My son had this happen to him. And when he found it, he immediately and involuntarily gave it to the teacher. He was suspended for three days from Bellevue Middle School. He missed three days of classroom time. The rule states that he could have been suspended for upwards of 10 days. This infraction is on his permanent record. There is an amnesty policy on the record. If it had been a weapon other than a gun and he had turned it in, he would have had no consequence. Because we all know that if a child finds something on school grounds that should not be there, we all want that child to bring it to a school authority. My son did that and he was punished. And I spoke with the dean, I spoke with the vice principal, or principal, I spoke with Rusty Corel at the school board I was directed to. And they all came back to me and said, "Well, he owned the backpack for more than one day where he found it and therefore he's guilty." It was a backpack I had bought at a yard sale. He had taken to school. Immediately, when he found that vape pen, he brought it to his teacher. He was treated like a criminal. He had to speak up to the resource officer saying, "I turned it in," as they were searching him and treating him as a criminal. He just tried to do the right thing, what we want our children to do. And he was punished and it's on his record. And for every Marion County School child, my four kids, and every kid coming forward, if they find anything on school grounds that shouldn't be there, they should feel the very safety to bring it to any authority in school without a consequence. My son to me, what if somebody, he didn't, he honestly, he had never seen it in his whole life till that moment when he pulled it out. He goes, "Mom, what if somebody had stuck it in my bookbag on the bus?" You know, they found it or they had it and they stuck it in his, because it was in the little outer pocket. So I ask you to review the rule of a child handing in, this is considered, a vape pen was considered drugs or tobacco. So it had no amnesty like the knife or any other weapon except for a gun has the amnesty and no consequence. I would like you guys to review that and think about having no consequence for anything that's turned in voluntarily especially. And there's absolutely no reason for a mandatory suspension for anything like this when we want children. When I grew up, come on, you go to school, I found a pack of cigarettes, I gave it to my teacher, say, "Good job, thank you." My child was suspended. I have another minute and 43 seconds and I'm going to use it for my other passion. This child, who also is an honorable student, I have four children, one wears a mask to hide. She loves it. She wears it to hide. She's so thankful you let her hide. Not a good thing for her mentality. My other kid I'm talking about has not only had the referral and three-day suspension for the vape pen that he found and turned in, he has had eight, nine, I don't know how many referrals, for not wearing masks properly because he wore it 99.9% of the time. When he turned it over, he got a referral, whatever, eight or nine times literally, he's gotten referrals. Do you know how many days he's missed from school because of not wearing a mask properly? He has lost a lot of school days and I don't have the number, I should have known coming in here. This is a distraction from them learning and I, like every other parent, this has been a horrible year for my children. My child has been threatened by the dean through me, you know, like the dean threatened me that my child would be sent to a special school for bad kids because of his length of referrals because he can't wear a mask properly. I said, "Can you please give me that in writing, Dean Jones?" And he screamed at me on the phone that I can write down what he is saying because he doesn't have to write down anything for me, stating how many more referrals my son has for improper mask-wearing before he is spent, sent to a special school. All I was asking for something in writing, saying if you get one more referral, two referrals, how many more referrals before he gets put in a special bad kid's school? And he told me I could sit at his desk and write it down if I couldn't write it down over the phone.
Your time has expired.
So anyway, please. I, I love school. My kids love school like her. I want my kids in school, but I want them to have the right to go to school maskless and I want them to be able to do the right thing without a consequence on school grounds. So thank you. you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Mary Rivera?
A moment. Dr. Gollum? Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like for Mr. Vianella to meet, is it Seiden?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Seiden, if you would go and speak with Mr. Vianella, would like to get more details on the vape pen, he is right here, if you could go outside and get some-
My daughter's graduating tonight at Bellevue Middle at 7:00, which was not good timing for us, so I'm coming, and then we gotta go.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Martinez Lopez.
Ms. Mary Rivera?
I'm Mary Rivera, Fort McCoy, Florida, 32134. I'm here to address, hi Jeremy. I'm here to address the HOSA stipends specifically. I know Mr. Vianella had come to the bargaining team meetings, of which I'm a member for the Marion Education Association, although I'm not here speaking on their behalf, I would like to clarify that. We had discussed a variety of academic stipends to be awarded to teachers who indulge in the after-school hours teaching of these specific academic subjects, HOSA being one of those specific subjects. The HOSA teacher at Fort McCoy School, who is a middle school teacher, I might add, is not receiving a HOSA stipend, but rather a Level 1 academic stipend, which is exactly half the amount of the HOSA stipend in Addendum C, pages 63 and 65, I think, in the addendum. And I'm here to address why it is that they're receiving an academic Level 1 stipend in lieu of the HOSA stipend that was discussed, not only here at the meeting, but also at the bargaining table where we made the decision that they would receive a regular HOSA stipend of the $1,000 for the academic club. That is all. I'm not here to talk about masks or anything else, I just want to make sure that my girl is taken care of. This is my daughter Catherine, who is an international second-place winner in HOSA competition, to which Fort McCoy School took home three champions that year, two second-place and one first-place international competitors through the middle school program, working after school and in neighboring towns around the state of Florida. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Gary White?
I'm Gary White, I live at 9280 Southwest 96th Court Road in Ocala, Florida. I'm going to be very short. I want you to rethink, relook at Lori Gregory's conversation with you tonight. She is an expert, I believe, she is listening to the right people. The interesting thing about this conversation is that I think you almost all agree with what we're talking about, and you're starting to hear the things that we're hearing about, the medicine, the shots too early, the actual mortality rate. Dr. Lidle, if you'll go back and listen, two weeks ago, he spoke here, he is speaking all over helping people get through whatever form of COVID they might have with ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, multiple doses of vitamin D, multiple doses of zinc and copper, and don't get the test, get the D test, find out how much D you have. If you have between 80 and 120 points of D, you probably have no chance of getting COVID. So please go back and listen to Lori again, the papers she gave you are extremely important. Dr. Lidle, if you can go back and listen to him again. Do you know that last year, 2020, when 500,000 people died of COVID, there was only 35,000 more deaths than the year before? This is CDC. There was only 35,000 more deaths last year than there was the year before. And the year before, it was up 10,000. So it was well within the program. So thank you so much for listening to me. God bless you all. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez. May I have a motion to adopt the revisions to the 2020-2021 Code of Student Conduct for the 2021-2022 school year? Move.
Thank you.
Moved by Board Member McCall, seconded by Board Member Cummings.
Thank you. The revised 2020-2021 Code of Student Conduct for the 2021-2022 school year complies with board policy and Florida statutes.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address revised 2020-2021 Code of Student Conduct for the 2021-2022 school year? Seeing none? All those in... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes. I will be voting no on this revised version of the Code of Student Conduct. It has language in it that will allow students that have been alternately placed to walk for graduation at their schools, alternatively-placed students have behavior disciplinary and safety referrals and have been placed, and I do believe that actions do have a consequence, and in my opinion, time should be no different, so I will be voting no tonight.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C 7.1 through C 21.1? Move. Moved by Board Member McCall. Seconded. Seconded by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to our discussion item. May I have a motion to approve Evergreen Elementary School option to close Evergreen Elementary School effective May 28, 2021? May I have a motion? Move. Moved by Board Member McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, we pulled this one, or it was pulled, because I expressed in my, in the work session that I would not be voting for Evergreen's closure. We made a commitment to Evergreen some years ago, to the community. I've heard since our work session from many citizens concerning this decision. As I stated before, I do understand the fiscal reasons why, but I cannot conscientiously vote for the closure of that school.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. I will state what I stated at the workshop. I am disappointed in the Department of Education and the fact that when they could have used our data a year ago to help us keep Evergreen open, it was chosen not to use the data. The passion is there for so many, so many have worked so hard, all the principals that have been there, including the current principal. This is not an easy decision for this board, I want the community to understand that, but with the decline in student enrollment, with the fact that learning gains are not what's going to get us the C grade we need, it must be proficiency, and with the enrollment down, the chances of that are slim, unfortunately. I am voting yes on this, simply because fiscally, we cannot keep it open, and I believe that those parents deserve the opportunity to know where their children are going. The community needs to know that school grades won't even be out till probably July, maybe even August, when schools are graded, and there's a chance that Evergreen could be closed at that time, and I think that's unfair to the parents to make them wait. So not an easy decision, not one that I take lightly, but a decision that I think is necessary for the students to continue to be successful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Board Member McCall. Board Member Campbell?
Madam Chair, I also would like to just express some thoughts. I know this is uncharted territory for this district, frankly, based on what we heard from Mr. Knight talking to us in our work session, that even considering what this looks like for this school building to be repurposed, it's kind of uncharted territory for us. The decision is not being made lightly. I did not have community input this past week since we've made this thought or decision, but I did read some commentary, and I want the community to understand all that has gone into this effort for the past two years. These students did have highly effective teachers working with them, they did have multiple resources at their disposal, they did have multiple administrators spending time on that campus on a regular basis, school board members, superintendent, area director, you name it, they had lots of resources. I don't want the community to think that we just left them high and dry. There were donations coming in, there were volunteers, when we could have volunteers, there's been a lot of work put in to try to extend this, and I know that there was work done to get them to a score that if we had just been able to take tests last year. And it is what it is, and I hate to say it that way, but our students were unable to take the FSA, and so because of that last year, that has put us in the position that we're in now. As Ms. McCall says, the declining enrollment for a school that holds more than 700 to have roughly 200 students, 28 fifth-grade students, you only have, you know, you have less than 100 students even taking the FSA, based on the eligibility of the number of students or even there. The small numbers, I know we have teachers that are moving to other schools, we only had a handful that were planning to be left. Just all of these extenuating circumstances have led us to this decision tonight. That is not an easy one, and that is, I just don't want the community to think we're taking it lightly, but I too will be voting in favor for closure of Evergreen Elementary.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. I want to start by saying that Evergreen Elementary School is in my district, and I've represented them for three years now, almost three years. And when I first went to Evergreen, knowing the history of the school, and people talk about how important it is to know your history, and so it's important for the community to remember that Evergreen was an A school. And I have to say that there has been years of what I would call questionable decision-making when it came to staffing and who the principals, you know, were going to be, and a lot of turnover year after year. That type of management doesn't create success, and we're definitely are where we are for a few reasons, in addition to the one I just stated. I'd like to thank Melissa Keiner, who is our area director, for our transformation schools, she's worked tirelessly with Evergreen and Oak Crest and, let's see, nine other schools. Melissa Ramsey at the Department of Education, Dusty Sims, Sandy Bruska, Principal Wayne Livingston, current principal Ashley Kemp, and also our external operator, current external operator Jane Osperman. I'm looking down at a letter from April 14 of 2020, and for those of us, again, that remember our history, this is when COVID really started to hit hard. And even within those challenges of a school that has struggled so mightily, that came so close to getting out of external operation the first year, they were only two percentage points away. And then last year, before COVID hit and schools closed, we had three-quarters of really good data, good solid data that matches up with the FSA that the kids will be taking that determines the school's grade. Well, we had double-digit, you know, increases, and so here we were in a COVID year, asking the State Department of Education for some grace and compassion for this school that had earned by all appropriate and accurate measurements, academic measurements, that they were going to make a C at least last year. But there's only one person that gets to decide whether or not a school is really going to get out of external operation or be granted any kind of grace and compassion. There's been a lot of talk tonight about how difficult this has been, you know, for parents and for everybody. And even within all that, and even with a previous leader who was commended for her ability and for her sense of urgency, and who drafted a letter to the person that could have changed the course of history for Evergreen Elementary School, we were still told no. So then, here comes COVID. This year has been a struggle. Teachers began to lose heart, knowing that school grades weren't even going to come out this year until after school ends. And I said at this week's work session, that's just preposterous. So the teachers didn't bail on Evergreen Elementary School. I would more accurately say the decisions made above us bailed on them. And it got to the point where this year, we weren't able to have all effective and highly effective teachers there. We had several brand-new teachers that came into an elementary school that had been in the spotlight for years, and all teachers really want to do, especially brand-new teachers, is teach and perfect their craft of teaching. But it just seemed like it was one thing after another, and even with all of that history, this school has the opportunity this year to get the grade. But you know what the irony of that is? It doesn't matter, because we can't find the teachers anymore to come and teach at Evergreen Elementary School. No matter how much we pay them, that should resonate with this community. It certainly resonates with me, and I know it resonates with every single one of us on this school board. So we're going to do what we have to do and what we should do, which is always do our best to take care of each and every child. It is not fair to each and every child and to each and every family to wait until school starts to then tell them, "No, you can't stay at Evergreen Elementary School, now we have to find a place for you." How disruptive and unfair. And we talk about how this whole pandemic thing has affected kids and anxiety and stress. There's no way in good conscience that I could do that to a child with my vote. So tonight, I'm going to cast a no vote as a protest, and symbolic of the fact that the course of history had an opportunity to be changed in a direction that would have given such a positive boost to this school, to this community, to the families, and to the kids. They were on their way to earning it and got told no, and it's as simple as that. So I will be voting no tonight. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No.
No.
Motion passes three to five.
Three to two.
Three to two, I'm sorry. I almost made it all the way through.
Did you have a public comment?
Is there any public comment that wasn't on the script, but I'm...
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to donations. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $20,630.42? that have a total value of $20,630.42. $6,454.42 to Bellevue High School from Wild and Country 4H. $6,000 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Dr. N.H. Jones Parent Organization. $1,706 to Denellen High School from Denellen High School Baseball Boosters. $1,765 to Denellen Middle School from, in memory of David Cook, Macklin Walker and family. $1,955 to 8th Street Elementary School from Donors Choose. $1,750 to Hillcrest Public School from Marion Service Roofing and Sheep Metal Company. $1,000 to Marion Technical Institute from First Christian Church Disciples of Christ Romeo's. The men's group. May I have a motion? Oh, moved. Moved by Ms. Campbell, second by Board Member McCall. Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, second and bye-bye, Sheriff King. I sit corrected. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. King, since I almost missed you, would you please give the thanks tonight?
On behalf of the Marion County School Board, thank you so much for your generous donations. They truly mean so much to our schools, especially during these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to board committee reports and concerns, we'll start with some meeting reminders. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June 3rd, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss COVID-19 updates if needed, construction projects update, hurricane briefing update, 2021, 2022, general insurance renewal review, special detail agreement, MCSO safe schools, new charter school contract review, public education foundation discussion, and five-year school plan survey updates. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June 17th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss COVID-19 updates if needed, school planning update, best standards discussion, final review, contract Macintosh, random options, and MTI, MTC relocation options. Okay, a lot of things coming up. All right, we'll begin with Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Once again, it has certainly been a year of unprecedented challenges. So as we conclude the school year tomorrow, just want to say thank you again to our students and our staff and our families and the community for the support. And we hope for a very bright future and a return, return to some normalcy in the new year ahead. I want to congratulate our graduates. We are rolling forward with graduations and congratulations to them. And also to wish all of our students a safe and productive summer. We want them all back here safely in the fall, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Attorney Powers.
Nothing to report from legal, except a great congratulations to all those about to graduate and finish out this school year.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez.
The only thing, Board Members, you have packets in your mailbox for the upcoming summer conference, so please make sure to pick those up as they have your agendas and all the information you'll need for your conference, please. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Ms. Campbell?
Sure. This has been a heavy one tonight, honestly. And so, you know, when you sign up to be a board member, you don't really know what else is going to come your way. And you, you can attend as many meetings as you think and you think that you've seen it all and you think that this is going to be, you know, okay, well, I can, I can answer that or I can vote on that or... And then we have things like what we've had tonight. And so this is, it's been heavy, frankly. And, and these decisions that we make, we don't take lightly and we don't take just flippantly. Definitely they're with a heavy heart sometimes. But I, I also want to say that I appreciate those that came and spoke tonight to us. I've attended many of these meetings through the years and many a time, there has been no one in the audience ever to speak. And to have parents and other advocates here speaking on behalf of others, it really makes me grateful for the participating in the right to speak at community meetings. And as a civics lover myself, I love civics and American government. They truly are showing our students what it looks like to be a part of government. And that's one thing that separates us in this country and in this community, and I'm grateful for that. With that being said, I know that Board Member McCall went on record at our work session the other day with her statement in favor of this. But I also would like to go on record that I will be in favor of making masks optional in the fall and beyond, and I wanted to go on, on record saying that officially. And finally, as Dr. Gullett and Attorney Powers have said, obviously, congratulations to all of the graduates and congratulations to 5th grade graduates and 8th grade graduates, and then obviously all of our seniors who are, who are finishing up where they are. But regardless of where those seniors are going, obviously, we had the career signing day and the, the E's where the students are choosing. But I was speaking with Mr. Kelly at Marion Technical College just this week and I wanted to make everyone aware publicly that MTC has student grant money available right now to all students who need assistance. So if any student needs assistance and they had considered going to MTC but money had been an issue, MTC does have grant money right now available to students. And it's a great time to go to school for a year or potentially even less, receive certification or licensure and come out with a good-paying job with little to no debt. You can do that right now through our very own Marion Technical College. That's all this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings?
As, as everyone has already stated, tomorrow's the last day of school. I think some people are still testing, if I'm not mistaken. So we want the, we want those kids to push, push all the way through to the finish line. Don't stop short of getting through the tape. And we do want to thank, I, I personally want to thank all of our staff this school term for this, the work that they put in in this extremely difficult year. It started off difficult, it's ending difficult. It has been a challenging, a challenging year for everyone. And I, I want to thank this board as well because with the addition of Ms. Campbell, the new addition of Ms. Campbell, we've had to deal with some things that have kind of been unprecedented for other boards. I don't think, it's been 100 years probably since the school board had to deal with pandemics and how to get school going. And I'm sure they didn't have computers in the 1980s and how to have alternative forms of, of educating our kids. So I want to, I want to thank you all for putting students first. That's what we had to do, that's what we've done, so thank you for that. I, I do want to congratulate all of our, our graduates, whether you're graduating from elementary school to middle school or middle school to high school, or high school to beyond. We, we celebrate your accomplishments. To our seniors that are graduating to the next level, whether it be one of the three Es, employment, enlistment, or enrollment, I do want them to take a few moments to think seriously about what the next step is going to be. We pray that this district has prepared you to make the right next step, to choose the right E. So I encourage you, I encourage you. If you grew up in the Cummings household, you would know that there's a rule in the Cummings household called the 1890 Rule. After you turn 18 and graduate, you got 90 days to choose an E. To choose an E, employment, enlistment, or enrollment. So, so I would hope there's other parents out there that would enact the 1890 Rule. I do want to congratulate Ms. Adriana Arias from Bellevue High School for getting the Bridges, when the Bridges essay, the young lady and the young lady from Howard as well. We have some great kids, we have some great things going in our district. We have to celebrate the great things and we have some challenging things and we have to just deal with the challenging things. Tonight has been a challenge. This whole school year has been a challenge, but we, we managed to get through it. As a community, we get through it, as a board, we get through it, as a school district, we get through it. We heard a lot tonight about masks and different sciences and different studies and different things. I, I do know, I haven't read all those, those studies. I'm not going to tell you that I have. But I, I do know that when it comes down to making decisions for our kids, we're going to do what's best and we're going to put them first and we're going to put their safety at first. And whether that be optional, whether it be whatever, we're going to do the right thing for those kids. I'm confident in that. I have kids and grandkids in this school district and I want to see them healthy holistically and healthy mentally going forward. So I'm sure we'll make the right decisions with that. The Evergreen situation, again, not to rehash it, it's been tough. It's been tough for years, many, many, many years. And our chair eloquently put it tonight that some, some decisions are forced from higher-ups. I think if there was anything that we can do as a board to, to make it happen, to make it stay, to make it successful, we would do it. I just think that we got dealt some bad hands. So again, I look forward to the graduations that are coming up, albeit at many of them that I can be at. And I encourage these young people that are graduating, please be safe. Please celebrate responsibly. I think 21 is the legal age for drinking? Is that it? So, nobody's 21, I, I hope graduating. So please be responsible and just get to the next step. Don't, don't do anything that's going to hurt you. Let's, let's have a great summer. I'm looking forward to summer school, so.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Board Member McCall?
Thank you, yes. A special thank you to all the parents that came out tonight. I know they are advocating for their children. I too want to, all of us want to see the masks go away. It's not normal for us to not be able to smile and hug and handshake. But, but I will say that, that we have done an excellent job under the leadership of Dr. Gullett, working closely with our county officials, with our health department, with our emergency management. And we have done a great job of keeping our schools open with the information that we have been provided. And so I feel confident that our kids will come back and, and be unmasked, those that his parents choose to, and, and our 21, 22 school year will look a lot different. But again, thank you to the parents who, who came out. I gratefully appreciate that. I also want to thank the staff, everyone who is employed by Marion County Public Schools. It has been an incredibly challenging year. And you have met those challenges, you have fought through those tough online learning, the getting kids back to school, so thank you. I hope you will have a restful, relaxed summer. Enjoy the beach, put your feet up. Go to the professional development that we are providing. But we look forward to seeing everybody back in August in a whole different environment. I had the pleasure today of being at the Silver River Museum and experiencing Ewan McGregor's science lab and the kids that were there. They've been doing things all summer, so I am going to encourage each and every one of you. I was never excited about science, but he got me really excited today. And to watch those kids and to know that every student in Marion County will have the opportunity to do science experiments and that our teachers will have the professional development so that they will be comfortable with experiments in their classrooms. And it was amazing. So I'm going to say, go visit our science lab. It is something to showcase and be so proud of, including our whole Silver River Museum. I don't know of another district where those students have what we have at the Silver River Museum. It is not open to the public except on the weekends because it is a classroom for our kids. Parents, if you haven't taken your kids there on the weekends, I'm going to say it's, make it a summer, make it a, a summer field trip. Because what's there is a tremendous history of Marion County and so much more. So thank you to Mr. Mitchell and all that he does there. So it was just amazing. Go see Mr. McGregor's science lab. So thank you and enjoy summer school and we'll see you back in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member McCall. Vice Chair King?
Yeah, I'll probably be short and sweet tonight. To the class of 2021, congratulations. You guys have just taken on an unprecedented year and time and your future is going to be easy after this. And, and not only for our students, but for our staff and all our other students. We are all stronger because of that. So again, congratulations to you and your family for this wonderful milestone. Also, it was kind of touched on, it's been a little bit of a challenging year. And then when you think things, you know, are pretty, you know, struggling, it gets a little heavier and a little bit harder. But what comes to my mind, there's a saying, it always gets darkest before dawn. And we're coming out of it and next year, this summer and next year, I know we're going to be much better for that. And I do thank Dr. Gullett for coming in in July in the middle of a pandemic and, you know, steering us through this challenging year. So thank you. And that's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. I know it, it seems like the year's gone by super fast, but yeah, it seems like forever ago when July came and, and you came on board, Dr. Gullett. Thank you for jumping into the mess of public education in, in Marion County and everywhere else. It's such an extraordinarily unique time. And there's certainly been a lot of dignity and compassion and grace in this school system through the year. You know, through crisis comes creativity and we've learned to do some things differently and better that we'll continue to do, you know, going forward. As I was sitting here listening to the, all of the different board members' comments and, and the comments from the audience tonight, I started thinking about my grandfather. And he was a really tough guy and big and tall and imposing. And, and I think what I learned the most from my grandfather is, is that overcoming adversity is what counts. Because adversity is going to happen, it's how you deal with it that makes the difference. And he would always, you know, smile and say, well, that was character building. And yeah, and another one of his favorite lines was, "Better than a sharp stick in the eye." So I think we can probably say that about this school year and all agree that it was better than a sharp stick in the eye. And as far as the rest of it, something I also am convinced of is that information moves very quickly these days. And I'm a voracious reader. I've been very interested and curious about following the, the progression of COVID-19 and how we started. A lot of us had groceries in the garage for a week at a time, you know, not even knowing how long it lasted on surfaces or, or anything else. People were literally afraid to walk out of the house. And, and now, you know, we're, we're reopening. Florida has, from the beginning, taken the lead in recognizing the importance of our kids being in school five days a week. It has not been easy, but, but we've done it. And so I look forward to continuing to partner with this strong board, with this strong leadership team and, and continuing to learn myself. And, and as Board Member Cummings said, you know, making the, the best decisions with the best information we can find from a variety of sources. Because in the end, each and every child and each and every employee and each and every family, we're the largest employer in Marion County. We're, we're the bellwether. So everything that we do ripples out into the community. And I too can't thank the community enough for coming in tonight. I meant it when I said, oh, we've got a full house and I was excited about that. Active communities make for great schools. And while we may not agree on everything all the time, I hope that we don't. That sounds kind of totalitarian to me. The, the passion of the discussion and the spirit of which it's intended are our children's greatest teachers. So I, I hope that we haven't seen the last of you. I, I hope that there'll be other issues along the way that you'll feel passionate about and want to discuss in a respectful manner. And, and let's prove to the kids how adults solve problems. And last but not least, we'll, we'll learn from the mistakes of, of, of the past. And to close it out, as far as Evergreen, that's where I'll be tomorrow on the last day of school. I'm going to dress down and enjoy spending time with kids. I'm going to dress down and enjoy spending time with kids, because in the end, that's what it's all about. And congratulations to the 2021 graduates. Vanguard High School, see you on the stage Friday night. I attended Hillcrest graduation just this past Friday, which was amazing. Scaled down this year because of the vulnerability of the kids, but still put on a beautiful ceremony. So we really are coming out of this. We have a lot to look forward to. We've got a good, strong team, good, strong parents. Let's roll. Thank you. Okay. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through May 4th, 2021. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-21-064E, JD-21-065, JD-21-066, JD-21-069, with educational services through the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year and the entire 2021, 2022 school year? May I have a motion?
Go move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, boy. Well, I think we'll say moved by...
She got both.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed, like, signed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting.